Chief would like everyone to sit down so we can be sure because we're at maximum capacity. So if everyone could try to take a seat, fill in some of these empty ones. We're trying to make sure we're not over our limit.
Ed, you gotta talk into the mic. The continuation of public hearing, MSW Associates LLC, application for special exception to allow transfer station of volume reduction plans in the IG-80 zone, 16 Plum Trees Road, number L-13144, SE number 664. This application has received by DIC approval. Public hearing was open on 12/19 and we're ready to go. Now, before we...
Maybe we could ask everyone to turn their cell phones off too?
Yes, please turn all your cell phones off and be patient with us and you'll get a chance to speak. First of all, I want to take the roll call of the planning commission. Ed Manus here obviously, Joel you're right here, John Giff not here, Ken Keller not here, Arnie Finelli's not here, Paul Laskis not here, and then Phil Semenera?
Here.
And Helen Hofstadter?
Here.
Now, Phil, would you sit in for John Giff?
Hello.
And Helen, would you sit in for Ken Keller? Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Just for record, Mr. Finelli has refused himself in this application.
We can't hear you. You have to talk into the mic.
Just for record, Commissioner Finelli has refused himself in this application of a potential conflict, so he's not absent for lack of members.
No.
Now, do we have anything that we would like to introduce before I ask the afternoon of our opposition? Do we have something here that has been submitted to Jennifer that we would like to introduce?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We received two emails, correspondence from two commission numbers. One from Commission Number Joel Eurice dated January 24th, and one email correspondence from Ken Keller dated January 30th today. I will read Joel's email into the record. "Hi Jennifer, I assume we will be closing the public hearing on Wednesday, so I have a few queries or food for thought items. Number one, has an updated report post 11/26 been received from engineering? If so, that is available in electronic format, would you kindly forward a copy to me? Number two, is there a space to store all the refuse onsite for a 24-hour period as required? That would be the equivalent of at least 13, 40-ton consolidation trailers, four in the outbound base, three or four in the staging area, and five plus elsewhere. Number three, during Abdul's review or elsewhere, was consideration given to the following scenario? Given the anticipated traffic volume, it seems there will be a hauler trip averaging every five minutes or so throughout the day, and a consolidation trailer slash tractor slash trailer trip averaging every 20 minutes or so, parentheses, peak times more often and off-peak less frequently, end quote. A, if a delivery vehicle of the largest size anticipated were in process of backing up to either the first or last inbound bay, and it were to have a mechanical failure disabling it from moving under its own power, would there be sufficient lane space for all other inbound and outbound trucks and tractor trailers to circulate in a normal course of business? If yes, what would be the impact on inbound queues with reduced plant capacity of disabled block bay? If no, how and where would the disabled truck be moved, and how long would it take to remove the disabled vehicle? What would be the impact on inbound and outbound hauler queues? And, where would the applicant plan on staging the inbound vehicles? Inbound, parentheses, inbound drive can accommodate up about four or five haulers, as I recall, and fewer consolidation tractor trailers, end quote. B, same scenario questions, but for a disabled consolidation tractor trailer outside of a bay on the outbound side of the building? Or should I ask just, or should I just ask questions two and three Wednesday? Thanks Joel." That's the first email received again, January 24th. The second email, and these are in the record, the second email was received from Ken Keller this afternoon. "Hi all, sorry I will not be able to make the public hearing this evening. Thank you to whomever will be chairing. I did have a chance to review Abdul's traffic report as it is posted online at the News Times website. Following our Abdul summary and conclusions, I would hope that the commission would call the applicant on all of these and ask them as to how they are going to address Abdul's concerns. It is clear from the report that Abdul concludes that the benefits of this proposed transfer station do not outweigh the negatives that the application presents in its current form. Also, I have attached the staff report that was emailed to us the other day with underlying comments from staff. What I did was comment and read FON as to my thoughts on a number of these. Feel free to look over my comments, disregard them, whatever you choose. I hope the meeting tonight does not keep you there until late hours. Jen, please let me know tomorrow how it went and where we're headed from here. Thanks, Ken." He included a summary of Abdul's comments with no additional comments. He took my staff report. What I will do is, rather than reading my entire staff report into the record, I will read his comment per number, the red comment. So, comment number one in my staff report, he adds, "Will we hear back from Corporation Council before we close and vote on this?" Number five, I am assuming that they are contending that what has been discussed by their experts at the hearing is their way of formally presenting this info. As you say, all of this should be part of what they submitted in their official documentation to staff. This is in reference to the operation plan. Number six references the storage areas in my staff report. Ken comments, someone on the planning commission should ask them about this tonight. Number nine, A, which is in regards to Section 6C, additional industrial regulations. The first one is noise. I would concur that this information has been presented to the commission at the public hearings. That being said, we should have on file something that formally represents the conclusion that was reached. Letter B, which talks about odors. Once again, I'm sure that they are thinking that all of this information that was presented at the public hearings would suffice as their official response. 10A, which talks about landscape requirements, they will need to fix this, that's what Ken had recommended. And, letter B, which has to do with the landscaping as well, he reflected the same type of comment. 11 is the grading comment, has the applicant related, related how they are going to address this. 12A is retaining walls. Ken commented they need to be asked about this, preferably this evening. 13A, access, this talks about queuing capacity. Ken comments, I remember the applicant addressing this a number of times stating that adequate onsite, adequate onsite queuing would be available. 14C, four. Are we aware if they are prepared to show us where this parking will be located? 16D talks about sightlines. Abdul has commented on this for us. And, his last comment refers to my additional comments, 17-18. Can someone on the commission please ask them about both these comments tonight? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Now, is there anyone here prepared to speak in favor of his application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Gregory J. Cava, Attorney, 24 Bank Street in Milford, Connecticut, representing the applicants, MSW.
I have a question before you start, and that is, there have been some recently filed plans. Do you want to explain what those are, what changes were made?
Yes, that's exactly where I was going to start. I think it makes sense, the application has had a number of tweaks and modifications made to it in response to comments by staff and by the traffic engineer and others. And I think what we're going to do is try to, try to have our team present what the current plans that are now filed show, and what the status of the application is and all the comments back and forth. Since those emails were sent, I don't know if we got those, I don't think we did, the emails you just read, Jennifer.
No.
Yeah, so we haven't, I don't know if we've addressed many of the items that were questioned in there, maybe addressed this evening. If not, we'd like to go back and make sure they all get addressed before the evening's over. And, let me start with Mark Sessin, our civil engineer, to talk about the new set of plans and where we stand with those.
Good evening. As Attorney Cava indicated, my name is Mark Sessin, federal engineer in the state of Connecticut.
Let me just add while he's adjusting the microphone, that everyone will have an opportunity to view these during, when we take a break.
We would avoid by any current engineering services incorporated in the state of Connecticut, we prepare the site needs. From the birds I view, for the most part, the site looks very similar, especially from a distance, but there's one key feature here, the addition of a second scale. The applicant has agreed to install a second scale to reduce the truck queuing, both inbound and outbound, as well as the duration, the time duration of queuing. The applicant has also agreed to install a fast pass system similar to those used on toll roads. Both of those are shown on the plans, as well as documented in the operation plan that was submitted to the city. Secondly, we have submitted plans to show a turn lane off of Plum Trees Road for trucks making a right-hand turn into the facility. In front of what is now a Putton Automotive, there would be a shoulder line making a turn lane for trucks to maneuver in and to access the site more easily. We've also, at the location I'm pointing to now, moved the curb and shown on the plan signs that will indicate no right turn out of the driveway. And that curb, as shown on there, is intended to prohibit and discourage people from even attempting to make a right turn out of the driveway. Well, you can't tell from looking at the plan, but you can tell from the rating plans that we have submitted. We had matched with the city's traffic engineer, Mr. Monnet, as well as people from the engineering office, agreed after that meeting to lessen the slope of the access driveway at Plum Trees Road for a distance of 100 feet, and also lessen the slope between the initial ramp in the scale to 8%. To lower the correction factor of the additional stopping distance for trucks exiting the driveway, as well as to make it easier for trucks turning in and going up the driveway to the scale, for them to be able to get through that portion of the driveway easier. Response to comments from the planning staff, we have added a canopy of canvas naturally seen 24 feet in height over the brush pile in the trucks. So this one, except for the last area, which would now fall out as big area where snow could be stored, that's one of the later comments. The canopy could not be constructed to be closer to the northerly property line due to building setback requirements. That was one of the issues that we had gone back and forth with, so to speak, with the planning staff. Mr. Greg, the landscape architect for the project who's also here, is available to discuss in detail what the commission would like or if the staff would like, the landscaping plans. For now, I'll leave it to the technical comments from the landscaping. With respect to landscaping, have been addressed in a set of details and plans and additional plantings down the front. More specific information, as in not just the rate, but as actually defining what each of these trees will actually be. You can see, if you get very closer, I can show you, there are callouts as to, not only how many of the trees, but what each tree will be. Original rate of plantings, method regulations, but we did not specify which trees going to where. Kevin also has a typical here with respect to what's going on in the buffer. And, the applicant, planning staff has indicated on other projects, when you're talking about intermixing new plantings, as a condition of the application improved, the applicant would have. Does state licensed landscape architect meet with the planning staff? And they could put states in the field as the landscaping is being done, so that there's no doubt before the trees go in, which trees are going to where, especially in the area where we don't want to cut down trees too much, plant new trees. The next few changes to the project that we'll discuss relate to comments that we had received from the fire marshal, the second round of comments received from the fire marshal, the first round of comments we had previously addressed, which related to types of fittings and size of fittings on the hydrants. The second round of comments were in more detail. The first of which is, in the interest of fire safety, we recommend that the proposed facility be fully sprinklered. This is the January 18th letter from the fire marshal, Deputy Fire Marshal to Dennis Elpern. Despite the fact that it's not required by the building code, the applicant has agreed to install at his expense a dry-type sprinkler system. After meeting with the, the dry sprinkler system is one that would function in cold temperatures so that there's not water in the lines, the building would be unheated. The water would come into the line if sprinkler head is activated due to a pressure, at least valve would open and water would fill the lines. Fire marshal also asked that we contact the National Fire Sprinkler Association regarding specific sprinkler heads that may have been invented that would pop up out of the floor. We were somewhat skeptical, but nonetheless have contacted. Since meeting with the fire marshal, the National Fire Sprinkler Association, they have agreed that if such a thing is recommended and it's practical to install on their floor, they'll have excavators and piles and machinery on top of it, the applicant would consider it. Certainly, the same type of dry sprinkler systems employed in other industrial buildings the applicant has agreed to install and will continue to pursue this issue up to the time of the building permit and construction. Comment number two, due to the potential heavy fire load, we recommend an additional hydrant to install in the area of brush pile. We have shown many more feet of main fire, excuse me, water line and an additional hydrant at this location. That's what's discussed with the fire marshal, Deputy Fire Marshal and the fire chief. This may bring me to one of the points that was brought up by the engineering department regarding easement. We have shown on the latest plans and easement. We recognize, we acknowledge that the water main needs to be approved by the common council, as we previously had done. The comments from the engineering department today, dated today, which we received late today, all of their comments have been satisfied. The easement is shown on this plan, sheet three of the plans that were submitted earlier this week. Same location as the water line, obviously. The applicant concurs with all the engineering department's comments, which basically are two left that can be resolved at a later date. One is that the eight points of conditions such as asphalt maps and things like that by the common council be incorporated. And, real choice, of course, he's agreeable to those. And the second that relates to the drainage, which due to the lowering of the driveway to the flatter grade, we did, and also due to the earlier comments from engineering, we moved the subsurface drainage infiltration system to the lawn area of Putton Automotive next door. It allows the, rather than the fireline being, or excuse me, the waterline being snaked around the drainage, we moved the drainage onto the adjacent property. They've seen that and they agree with that. They asked us to either confirm prior to construction, reassess ability for inspection, or put in an approved equal. The applicant is agreeable to put in an approved equal. They've reviewed our drainage computations, they're satisfied with the drainage computations. We're absolutely certain the amount of subsurface storage and infiltration can be provided there by one of numerous projects, excuse me, products, and that access can be provided. And they're sure to, I would guess, perhaps the planning department has a memo, I already get it and read it into the record. But nonetheless, we agree with everything in the engineering department's memo. And, they're comfortable with that, we're comfortable with that, and we moved the water line, it's better overall. Regarding grain retaining walls, which the engineering department had previously commented on, as well as the planning department, as we've indicated in the letter to the city, the applicant understands and agrees that all of the work will be either done on this property, or done if the slope easement can be obtained for more conventional construction, that easement would be in place prior to any construction. As we've indicated, there are unconventional means which would consider to build the walls. Some of the walls are obviously, now that this area is lower, the walls are higher. Due to some possible confusion, I would point out that the wall on the north side is in a fill condition and can easily be constructed on the applicant's property without going onto the city's property because it's in a fill, not in a cut. So, the only, the other walls, this wall is also in a fill. The name of being the applicant also controls, and there's also all the work over here on the, the applicant also controls. All those easements would be in place. And Mr. Putman is here, and he controls the property, we can discuss accordingly with him. But nonetheless, we've already told the engineering department that those plans would be subject to, they told us and we agreed, that they're subject to review by the, by the building department prior to construction. You have to build a, pull a building permit or anything over four feet and will stay anyways. And I think that will be done prior to construction, and hopefully come prior to construction. The last two comments from, I bounced around because there was some overlap between the fire comments and the engineering comments with respect to the water line. The next one also relates to the drainage from the fire marshal. Is the drainage system designed for this facility keep properly, can it contain any tainted runoff? Can the drainage system handle the load of water? The drainage system, we had previously provided in unsprinklered condition computations for what that fire flow would be. We've also supplied now to NPA what the sprinkler condition flow would be. We had also compared that in terms of CFS. And certainly, the drainage systems onsite are capable of growing a family much greater than the fire flows. We've also pointed out oil and water infodible separators are available onsite. Due to the relocation of this subsurface system, we're not able to pick up even the last couple drainage systems, excuse me, catch bases for those. And lastly, the applicant has agreed in the operation plan and states that spill containment mats, booths, and oils, collection devices will be available at the scale house near the tip floor, for use by the fire department or other responders. The next sets of comments are for A, B, and C relating to turn radii. Those are all accommodated, we use the same vehicle with respect to other trucks onsite. And we went on with that with the deputy fire marshal and the fire chief. The 10% driveway, the fire chief indicated they could, they can get there from here up the driveway, but they did not want to set their apparatus on those grades. It was pointed out to him, as well as to the deputy fire marshal and the fire marshal, that the grades in this area and in this area are less than 6%, which he had indicated, the chief had indicated, which was the percentage spoke that their apparatus could be set at. So they would see a need to set apparatus up on the driveway, it's allowed by rights. And basically, the flatter is up here, near the scale, on the back to set up their apparatus. It was our understanding, my understanding of that of Mr. Putman when we left the meeting with all the fire officials, that they were satisfied with his agreement to put in sprinklers, additional hydrants, and with the grading on the site. We have not seen the memo back. We have not seen the memo back from them, but I would characterize it that when we left, they were satisfied with what we said we'd do and we have done that. We also provided some distances that they had asked for in a subsequent letter. The distances being the distance to Putnam Automotive as well as the structures on the sewage treatment plant property and on the apartments. Getting back to the general changes to the plan, which we've, snow removal and winter maintenance are addressed in the operations plan that we have provided. Mr. Brown is here and available to discuss that. The runoff, as I indicated, pillows, booms, cover mounds and toilet materials would be available on site. All the drainage, I think Engineering Department has signed off on already and we're very comfortable with it. That summarizes it. The main feature for us being the additional scales and the turn lanes. I'm sure you're here. Mike Galanti regarding traffic and general, something. Unless there's any questions, that's it. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, you can leave that there for topics.
Excuse me, Mr. Girais. There was one change to the building plans, I'm sorry. In response to some interreaction with the older control specialists. The building footprint hasn't changed, but we have adjusted the locations of the doors. Yes.
This is like the R.
Okay. You had seen this diagram or similar diagram before. What we have done is adjusted the locations of the four doors so that the older control systems could be installed more effectively. And so basically the two, the two main bays to the north now have two trucks lining up with those two bays respectively. Trucks used to be further spread, or bays used to be further apart that these can easily be accommodated like this. The last bay is for sorted materials and outbound materials. There was never, was never really intended to have much tipped in that bay, bay far left. At this point, I may as well address one of the comments that Jennifer read into the record tonight in respect to what we anticipate would happen if one of these trucks was to break down either inside or outside of the building. If it's for a short while before they can get it going, I would say leave it there. If it's for much longer than that, whether it's inside or outside, there'll be several very large excavators and loaders, at least one of each available. I would say that Mr. Putnam's equipment could move, move the truck out of the way, either into the building, which is pretty much puts it out of the way to the other trucks going by, or by pushing it or pulling it forward towards the trailers and container storage or over by the brush pile. And after that, as soon as a record could be up, right to the state, which I'd imagine Mr. Putnam would know how to get a record, that the truck would be moved.
Thank you, Mark.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question for you.
Wait a second. Just one second. Mr. Sessom.
Actually, I turned into two after you gave us this. The, one of your bays were on inbound bays, were on 32-foot centers. There's no indication here. What was the change that you made? They're no longer on 32-foot centers.
26 feet each.
Okay, so you can narrow the doors and shift.
Right, the trucks, legally their trucks are eight feet and the doors are much wider as you can see than the truck, but it's 26 feet. And it's still, to me, the wider the doors, the better. It's only less likely that they'll get hit, but the truck driver should still be able to make it. We've seen them even narrower.
26-foot centers and how wide is the door?
20 feet each. Yeah, the total width of that is 55 feet with the two 20-foot doors.
In one of the last things that was submitted to the planning department, following through the dates, I guess we got this yesterday, the 29th, addressing the sprinkler system that you just discussed, and you had this in Portland.
Yes, sir.
That area there, that's not calculated into the tipping floor.
Correct.
What was that area specifically for?
This is, this location here is an outbound shorter truck bay for scrap metal.
Okay.
So the truck would back in here and then move out that way. That's why it's an outbound, basically.
Okay, and it's just like another one of these bays, as closed off and re-closed during.
Yes.
So the tipping area is these three spaces.
The tip floors would be the one where your finger is now, and then the next one, and that third one would be for sorting.
Okay, that's 7,690 square feet. Okay, thank you.
Okay, just one question. It's always, I've always been considering, and maybe you're not the one to answer it, but it says that this is a volume reduction plan. How does the volume get reduced?
The volume gets reduced, that's a term, a regulatory term from the DEP. The volume would get reduced on this facility of two ways. The first would be the, when say demolition material, which would be dropped in the center bay, and if somebody had a radiator in there, an old cast iron radiator, that would be taken by the equipment, a Bobcat type of grapple, likely home to the metal container that I was just discussing. So the volume of waste has been reduced because the radiator itself has been removed from the waste stream. Or if there was clean wood such as a utility spool, that would probably be dropped in the container right here. So been reduced there. Secondly, the volume is reduced because things that have been constructed or boxes of cardboard that come on a construction site or other, other things like an old wall, they're reduced because the excavator would flatten them, thereby reducing their volume. Whereas a transfer station is just a straight container to container drop where the volume hasn't been reduced by segregating materials or by mechanically compacting it.
There's no mechanical compaction, other than what the front end loader is going to do.
The front loader and excavator, right. I mean, some materials, we're not proposing here, which is.
An excavator?
An excavator, yeah.
Like a backhoe or something?
Bigger than a backhoe. A tracked shovels is typically what they would use to load these outbound trailers.
Now, is the trailer, do they have to lift material up and put it into the trailer or does it just fall down into the trailer?
These trucks are 14 feet in the center bay, for instance, below the floor. So basically they could push it in or drop it in and then knock it down as we say with the front of the excavator.
All right, I think now I want to move on to some traffic related concerns and ask our traffic engineer, Mike Galanti, to come forward.
Good evening, Michael Galanti, Principal of Frederick Clark Associates. We are consultants for the applicant. I'd like to do in two steps tonight. First step, standing here and just summarizing our response report to the city's traffic engineer. I'm not going to go through every detail here, but I'm going to certainly summarize and touch on items related to traffic issues. Once I finish this, I will respond and use the boards for some reference purposes. This report was really done for two purposes. One, to respond to the city's traffic engineer's comments in great detail and comments from this commission during the course of the hearings over the last month or so. I'm not going to read it, just going to touch on the items and issues and go through it and certainly answer questions you may have. But this report is in response to the city's traffic engineer's report dated January 10th, 2008. I'm just going to touch on items and this, you may or may have it in front of you, but the first one was reference to traffic generation, site traffic for the development itself. This comment in their, in the city's memorandum really was just a summary of what was found in our traffic report. We agree with that because it was taken from our report and that is a reference to the amount of traffic, truck traffic that we used in the analysis. And we of course agree with that because that is from our document. So there's no need to go through the details of that. It's just, he's just repeating what we did. Some of these items I will not touch on, as someone else will tonight, someone that's an expert in this field, but source and destination of waste material, that'll be touched on at some point this evening. That's item B in this memorandum report. And I follow the same lettering system from the city's memorandum, just for reference purposes. Item C is the reference to passenger car equivalents. In other words, in the traffic analysis, we have passenger cars, trucks and so on on the road system and certainly our site traffic is broken down by truck traffic and to some extent passenger vehicles or smaller trucks. And the comment was that we should adjust our volumes or convert passenger vehicles to truck equivalents. We did. That was in the report. We did take a passenger vehicle and then convert that to a truck. And that is in the capacity analysis, which is a computer program, and we account for a truck, which is a different type of vehicle that moves differently, speeds and so on. That has been accounted for. Since this review comment came out, we went out and did some more vehicle classification counts on the roads themselves. And I'll touch on that in a little bit to give you an idea of what we included in the updated analysis, which responds to a different question. So we tried to bring it all together. And I don't mean to go over these too quick, I'm just kind of summarizing. Item D, which is on page six, was in reference to the impact of site traffic on Newtown Road east of Plum Trees Road. I assume that's the section from Plum Trees back to the east towards the Interstate 84 interchange and all the different roads in that section. That's about a mile length of road. And this comment from the city traffic engineer was really in reference to the number of accidents in that section of road. He doesn't mention this section of Newtown Road. I assume it's the entire section. It's about eight tenths of a mile. And his comment really is, you know, what can we do as the applicant to mitigate the number of accidents on that road itself? You know, it's a four-lane road, two lanes each direction, usually a left turn lane down the middle, major intersections or driveways to shopping centers have traffic signal control. There are many, many driveways that have no control or stop sign control. And the volume of traffic on that section of road is anywhere from 2,500 to maybe 3,000 vehicles during a one-hour period. On a daily basis, there are about 30,000 vehicles on that section of road. We are adding about 20 vehicles or 20 trucks in a peak hour condition in that section of road. We're adding traffic. We're certainly not changing the characteristic of how that road operates. It's a high-volume road today and as the city's engineer mentioned, there are accidents on that road. If you look at the accident patterns in that stretch of road, they're related to the driveways, the intersections and the high-volume, the turning movements. What can we do to mitigate that? I'm probably going to lose my spot and I think I just did. But what, all we can suggest to the city, and it's a state road also, is that an access management plan is necessary. What is that? That's something where traffic engineers or cities or states look at access to different, in this case, commercial development, shopping centers. Access management is you close driveways, you restrict turning movements, you eliminate the number of conflicts in a section of road. You know as well as I, there are many, many conflicts along that road and driveways and so on. We can't recommend closing someone else's driveway. We can come in and suggest stop and shop, eliminate their traffic signal. McDonald's, I know in a recent approval, they modified their driveway, I think as far as turn restrictions. That's the type of access management condition that is necessary to reduce the number of accidents on that road. I think we'd all agree, we can't change the volume of traffic on Newtown Road. It's there today. And we would add some traffic to it, but we're not going to change how that road operates. And I'll touch on that in a minute as far as capacity analyses and reference to that, which is the guidelines we have to follow. Next comment, which is E, is really the same thing. Newtown Road west of Plum Trees coming into town, if you will. We would add about 12 trucks or 12 vehicles in a one-hour period in that section of road. The volume of traffic is much lower in that section of road to two-lane road versus a four-lane road with turn lanes. The conditions are different, but you do have driveways and access points and traffic signals. It's a busy section of road, no doubt. It's easy for me to say, but an access, access management plan really is the only solution we can recommend to the city, but we can't implement that. We can work with the city on other things, but that's, we can't go in and recommend someone close the driveway. I think it'd be kind of difficult to do. I'm on page 10. Item F, which is the impact of the intersection of Newtown Road and Plum Trees Road, which is the, where the location of the traffic signal is. Again, it's reference to accidents at that location. The type of accidents is somewhat typical to a singleized intersection, rear end, right angle accidents over a period of time. We had about five accidents on average per year. I think the city's data was a little bit higher apparently. Again, what can we do to that intersection to mitigate impacts or operation of that intersection with or without site traffic? Again, if we put all our traffic at that intersection, which is in response to another comment, what if all the traffic comes back to Newtown Road and nothing travels south on Plum Trees? Peak hour condition, we add about 32 vehicles, let's say it's 32 trucks to that intersection. The intersection works today. Is it a busy intersection? Yes, but it works, levels of service, and then we'll touch on that. Again, that intersection, we've changed and recommend the changing of the green arrow, if you will, westbound on Newtown Road, that turn into Plum Trees. In other words, if someone's coming from the 84 interchange, traveling westbound on Newtown Road, turning left, it could travel southbound on Plum Trees towards the site itself. There was some concern and comments about that left turn arrow being quite short. We've analyzed it, we've changed the arrow as far as the green time available based on the traffic volumes, and we can make it work to give more time to that movement. We add about 10 vehicles or 10 trucks to that movement during a one-hour period. Now, and I'll touch on the details of that analysis in a minute.
Okay, we'll come back.
We'd like to keep this going on as best as we can.
Absolutely, and I'll certainly answer whatever question you may have. I'm on page 11 now, which is G, which is restriction of use on Shelter Rock Road. As mentioned before in our proposal, we are now proposing to restrict right turn movements from the site itself. In other words, we would like to direct all our traffic to and from Newtown Road. No traffic would use Plum Trees to the south and that would certainly hopefully restrict anyone using the Shelter Rock Road hill, which goes up towards Woodland Hills and so on. But what can we do to that section of road? The city shows some accidents on that hill. As we all know, that road was redeveloped as part of Woodland's development several years ago and it's certainly better than it was many years ago. The city has installed some warning signs to keep traffic to the right going up and down the hill itself. And it may be too early to tell if that's really doing anything at this point in time. We're offering that we could continue to work with the city as far as signing the warning signs and install those signs for the city as far as helping that traffic flow on that hill. It's a fairly steep hill. We're trying to keep our traffic off of that road and that'd be a benefit if we can do that. In the original analysis, we had four vehicles or four trucks traveling from our site south on Plum Trees Road towards Bethel. We didn't have any trucks going up and down Shelter Rock Road, but we control it at our driveway, which we can do, certainly the exiting movements. We believe we can control it or restrict it or limit it on Shelter Rock Road, the hill itself.
One second.
That was my cellphone.
I knew it was coming. I was hoping you were going to give a prompt stop.
I can talk faster.
Nope. Go ahead.
I will skip over H, which is noise, vibrations and emissions. This was in the traffic report from the city. I'm not an expert on noise, vibrations and emissions, so I will skip that. And I will go ahead to much further back in the report itself. In general, we won't summarize yet, but in general, we've responded, I've responded to the traffic related comments from the city traffic engineer, whether it's related to traffic accidents, delays and so on. If I may, I'm going to point to some of the graphics that are in this report that respond to, one of the comments from the commission, one of the commissioners last time was in relation to. relation to can we restrict, or can we analyze if all site traffic comes and goes towards Newtown Road instead of having traffic travel southbound on Plum Trees towards Bethel or towards Shelter Rock Road itself? We performed that analysis and I'll summarize that tonight. But this graphic here, which is in your report, and it's reference figure 16, which is the morning peak hour. This is with all the site traffic coming from the north, turning right, and all the traffic exiting the property and turning left. You see that we have a total of 32 vehicles traveling in and outbound total during the morning peak hour. And this is 7:30 to 8:30, which matches the peak volume of the, of the roads themselves. So we put our traffic on top of the peak volumes on the street itself. There is an overlap in the morning as far as commuter traffic versus truck traffic. In the afternoon, we're closed when there's commuter traffic on the road after 5 o'clock. But we've analyzed that condition, so we use the higher volumes in the weekday afternoon from 5 to 6 p.m. And I'm just going to reference this, but this shows the 16 vehicles turning out and traveling towards Newtown Road. We're saying 65% travel east or northeast towards 84, and 35% travel, let's call it southwest on Newtown Road, towards town itself. These are the numbers in the morning that we analyzed. It's 10 vehicles turning left onto Plum Trees Road, six coming from the west, turning right. And it's the reverse, it's basically the same. 10 are traveling northeast on Plum, from Plum, from Plum Trees during the morning peak So backside of that graphic just shows the afternoon peak. I won't summarize them, but it's the same, this figure 16, 17 in the report, it's just the afternoon peak hour. This figure, which is 18, again, shows the weekend morning peak hour in a build condition, which is the site traffic on the road system on top of the background traffic we anticipate in 2009. And what this is, is a reference to the right turn out, I'm sorry, the right turn in only and the left turn out only, as far as the analysis. This graphic shows in the brackets, if you can see it or look in your report, it shows the percent of vehicles or trucks at the intersection for each movement. And in the morning peak, just for reference, the left turn into Plum Trees is 7% of the vehicles or trucks through, is 5% coming out of Plum Trees, making a right turn is 6%, 7% and so on. Again, we had that for the afternoon peak. The only purpose of that is, in the analysis, we include that truck classification in the analysis. It's, in other words, we're not just saying everyone's a car. We're mixing it up to match what is out, actually out in the field. And that shows up in the analysis as far as delays and so on. This graphic is in the report, this latest report, and it's table two. In the original report, it's also a table two, but this is based on the analysis of if we just have restrictions out of driveway and everything is going towards Newtown Road intersection. And the key to this really, just look at the first one, which is the intersection with the traffic signal Newtown and Plum Trees Road. This is a no build condition. This is the build condition. Let's just reference the last column, which is identification of the project impacts. In other words, what is the difference or what is the impact or the effect of adding truck traffic and car traffic to the roads during the morning and afternoon peak hour? This shows, and we're following standards that the state and the city use for analyses of intersections, which is a procedure we must follow. This shows that the change in delay, and it's called average vehicle delay. In other words, if you look at the vehicles over a one-hour period, what is, what is the impact of a development? If you add traffic, there's some additional delay of some type. During the morning peak, it's telling us the average overall delay increase at that intersection is 0.7 seconds. That's per vehicle. In the afternoon, keep in mind, this is 5 to 6 o'clock when our facility is closed and traffic is lower, but we put it on top of the commuter traffic in the afternoon. That's telling us the average vehicle delay or increase in average vehicle delay overall for the intersection is 1.4 seconds. If you look at individual movements, you have a little different. You have 2.2 seconds, 0.3 seconds, depending on the location. Levels of service are still very good, A to B and B to C at the, at the intersection as a whole. The purpose of this table and this requirement of us when we do an analysis is to tell you what is the impact of our traffic on the road system. This is the way we show and this is how we tell the story. It grades the intersection. It's all based on, on delay. And the change in delay is this, the 0.7 overall for the intersection in the morning peak hour and 1.4 seconds in the afternoon. That tells me as a traffic engineer, and people may disagree, but that's, that's an insignificant impact. We're measuring the traffic on the road. We're using the background traffic on the roads today, the actual conditions. We've identified the vehicle classification that is out there today. We put our site traffic that we believe will be there on the road system with the 500 tons per day and so on, broken down into different time periods. And this is the analysis that we've come up with. And again, that's summarized, and that's why this report's so thick. The back of it's the computer printout from the analysis.
Michael, can I ask you a question before you go on?
Yes.
Two things. One, did your analysis take into consideration the fact that it's been said by some people here that a truck equals two cars?
Yes.
Was that taken into consideration in your analysis?
It's taken into consideration for our site traffic and for the traffic that's already there today, which is the vehicle classification count I mentioned earlier, as far as percent of trucks or large trucks or large vehicles by approach. And that's included in the analysis, yes.
My second question, Michael, is you said the delay in the morning peak is seven-tenths of a second. Could you give us some idea of what seven-tenths of a second? How long does it take before you look at a green light?
I don't think that's really necessary.
With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, with all, with all due respect, Mr. Chairman, I have the right to make a record, and I'm going to ask him to analyze that if it's within his expertise and his capabilities.
I'll be brief. I'll give you a quick answer. What that tells us is that it's quite frankly, very insignificant. A reaction time for a vehicle, a person to react to a light turning green and start up could be a second or two, depending on the type of vehicle and depends on the driver. But what this is saying, on average, overall, is 0.7 seconds per vehicle as far as increase in delay from site traffic, due to site traffic.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Chairman, you have your question?
You just have one more, then I'll answer the question now if you want. This is, this is, this is quick. One of the comments from the commission last time, or one of the last times, was to evaluate site distance at the proposed driveway on Plum Trees Road. We went out again and measured traffic as far as speed and volume and classification. This time, we put the machine right at the location of the proposed driveway. Last time, we had it up the road because the field crew didn't have the right spot. So we, we wanted to get it right where the road would be, where the driver is proposed, so we can measure vehicle speed in both directions. Overall, and this is in the report, overall, the speeds are about 41 to 42 miles per hour. Post speed limit is 25. This table just shows, I just did a top and bottom chart, but based on 25 miles per hour to post the speed, we need 280 or 350 feet, depending on the direction and type of vehicle, as far as site distance looking to your left. We have anywhere from 575 to 600 feet. So in essence, we have enough site distance for the post speed limit of 25. If you go down to the truck maneuver and the higher speed at the 41 or 42, certainly have the same distance available, but we need more distance of course, because the vehicle's traveling faster. This simply says we have enough site distance to meet the available site distance at the location of the driveway itself. That was in response to one of the commissioner's comments early on. And I'm ready to answer your question if...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All this through the chair so we don't delay on protocol. I want to go back, just, on your table two, you're talking about delay at Newtown Road intersection?
Yes.
That's average delay per vehicle?
Yes. That's how it's measured, yeah.
Okay, so seven-tenths of a second times how many vehicles in and out?
Eight. Well, we're, we're adding 10 vehicles to that movement.
Okay, you're saying the delay is only seven-tenths of a second for the number of, times the number of vehicles that you add to the traffic, or the applicant would add.
Due to site traffic. Yes.
Okay, due to site traffic.
Yep.
So that's, you know, where I'm talking about, the 286 turns per day total. I just find 0.7 seconds a little hard to comprehend.
No, I understand.
From my personal experience, a semi-trailer truck or even a garbage truck, you know, a pickup truck, as in pickup, hauler truck. Two and a half seconds, which is the outside delay on any of it, it takes more time left to turn you through the intersection.
Keep in mind...
How big the...
No, well, keep in mind, if we have 10 trucks over a one-hour period, let's assume it's a 90-second cycle for that intersection. That's 40 cycles per hour. So it's constantly changing. Through some of those 40 cycles during a one-hour period, we may not have any vehicles coming for that site traffic. So the delay or the delay of anyone and...
And other factors may be due after moments.
Well, that's true, but we're looking at a peak period. If the light's green when you arrive, there's no delay. Right? I mean, it's virtually, well, well, well. This is measuring delay at the intersection at the traffic signal. If the light is green, the arrow's green, and you're moving at whatever speed, there's no delay. So you have to take that into account, and that's accounted for in that analysis. Not everyone's stopping. Okay?
Now, I understand what you mean, Michael, but that's...
Okay. Okay. I tried.
Going back to the right turn issue out of the facility?
Yes.
And you're going to, you're going to change the curbing to discourage, make it difficult?
Physically restrict it, yes.
Physically restrict it. I mean, there will actually be curbing there.
Curbing, yes.
Not just strapping.
No, curbing.
To make it difficult for them to travel out that direction towards Bethel.
Yes.
Is going to be, I mean, is the turning radius that's going to be available there if they swing left, it's not, it's not such a deterrent that they can't, it just makes it difficult. Is that fair to say?
If it's a large truck, it'd be very, very difficult, if not impossible.
Or one of your outbound semi-trailer trucks, a 53-foot trailer.
Yeah, I mean, if it's someone driving a four-patient car, they can probably make the turn. Or a small truck, they can probably make the turn. We can't restrict it that much because you have to, keep in mind the design of that intersection. If you align it too much to your left, it looks like, you may have oncoming traffic coming in, it looks like a ramp. So you can only do it so much to prohibit or restrict that right turn movement out.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm just, I'm just thinking, you're somewhere in this presentation, you're going to rest the source and destination.
Yes, someone else will, yes.
Material that's going to be traveling through this facility. And I'm going to argue your point about city ordinances at this current time, but I assume that some of the traffic is going to be coming from out Danbury. I think that's a reasonable assumption, certainly based on prior testing. So I assume some of that may very well come from the Bethel area or that direction. And I just wondered what in the world would, you know, possess the hauler from taking the long way around?
Well, if we back up...
It's a little bit of a bit of a turn.
Yeah, we, let's back up just a little bit. As far as what traffic we anticipate coming from that direction, the original report showed four trucks in and out in that direction, which was 25% of our, our volume during, during a one-hour period. If we can discourage those four trucks from turning out, that's great. Can we discourage the four trucks from coming in from, from the Bethel side? It's more difficult to do that. You can do that with signing. It's difficult to develop a driveway in the area we have available to physically restrict it. Can someone still do that or decide to drive around the long way? We can only restrict it as much as we can. I can't answer that, it would be a guarantee.
Okay, so discouraging does not do that.
Well, I'm being realistic. I mean, I, yeah.
I am too. I just don't want it to go in the letter that somehow this is, this traffic's going
I can always come back up.
Yeah, that's, that's...
And I'm just checking to make sure I didn't leave anything out. That's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to bring up Al Smardin, our sound engineer, to discuss some of the revised sound wave volumes.
On January 10th of this...
Smardin, is it?
On January 10th of 2008, noise measurements were taken at Putnam Automotive between 10:00 a.m. and 11:00 a.m. The purpose for these measurements was to determine the noise level from the following sources. We measured a fully loaded roll-off dumper container emptying its contents onto the pavement, and the contents included post-construction debris. This was to see obviously what the noise level would be on the drop. Also wanted to know what the truck's backup alarm was. And the last item was, I remeasured the existing background noise levels at various residential areas. The noise from the roll-off dumper was projected into a building being proposed by the applicant, which will attenuate the noise 30 dB-a. I found that all of the data that was taken on January 10th is consistent with the data that was taken in the past. And I also found that the noise does not exceed the existing background noise levels, and it is in compliance with the conditions set forth in the Danbury Noise Code as well as the federal and state noise regulations. Then what I did was I extrapolated this data to the closest residential property line at 160 feet. And with the operation inside the building at 160 feet with all the doors closed, the level was 26 dB-a. Now, what I also did was compare this to published tables that compare sound levels and human response. Now, a 26 dB-a level is the equivalent of something that's considered barely audible. Now, when you compare that number, that's barely audible, to the existing background noise level of 56 to 58 dB-a, you can see that it's approximately 30 dB below the background noise level, which in effect would make it inaudible. I then compared the noise level inside the building when one door is open. That increases the noise level by 4 dB-a to 30 dB-a, which again, in the human response chart, is the equivalent of something considered very, very quiet. And once again, comparing it to the background levels of 56 to 58, it really would be inaudible because of the difference between the background level and the, and the measured level or the calculated level. With all doors open, the noise level would be 42 dB-a, and that's, that's considered in the human response chart as extremely quiet and again, well below the existing background noise level. Then I used a, a front-end loader or a forklift that was operating outside the building. At the residential, excuse me, residential property line, the level would be 47 dB-a, and this is considered extremely quiet also and below the existing background. I'm using the closest residential property line for, you know, for all of these. Then what I did is I calculated three diesel trucks idling on the site approximately 25 feet apart, one behind the other. And this level with the three of them came out to 50 dB-a at the residential property line again. And this again was considered very quiet in the charts. Three diesel trucks that are moving on the applicant's site, again, approximately 25 feet apart, would be 49 dB-a or again, considered very quiet. Then I took the backup alarms, one at a time. The first backup alarm would be 61 dB-a, which is considered below voice level at 160 feet. Two backup alarms would be 64 dB-a, which would be raised voice. And the three alarms at the same distance would be 66 dB-a, which again, would be raised voice. Now, basing, basing this on the data that I measured and extrapolated, I've concluded that the noise levels will not exceed the existing background noise levels of 56 to 58 dB-a. This is again, at the closest property line. It should also be noted that beyond 160 feet, as you go out further with distance, the level will... It should also be noted that beyond 160 feet, as you go out further with distance, the level will diminish. The things that I'm talking about here include the operation inside the building, the forklift or front-end loader that's operating outside of the building, and three trucks either idling or moving on the site. They will not exceed the Danbury Noise Code or the State of Connecticut Noise Regulations. However, the backup alarms that I mentioned do exceed the background noise levels. But they are exempt from both federal and state noise regulations. In addition, I also noted that when I was taking my measurements, that the existing background, the existing backup alarms that I noted when I was there or measured also exceed the background noise levels. But this operation that I just talked about will not be any noisier than the existing conditions that you have right now in the area. And that concludes my statements. If there's any questions, I will try to answer them.
Any questions from any of the other commissioners, I guess?
We heard tonight that there is a vehicle called a crusher or excavator.
Yes.
And I would imagine that makes a lot of noise if it's crushing construction debris. I mean, is there any, I don't know if you measured that or?
This was taken into account inside the building. Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Eurys.
Just a few points of clarification.
Sure.
The cumulative, what, three trucks, you were referring to as raised voice level? And that would not be higher than the background noise? Of course, over the portion of your residential, 160 feet, I think you reported, somewhere around that.
The three, you mean, the three backup alarms or the trucks?
Either way.
Oh, well, the backup alarms would be above the background noise level at 160 feet, but the trucks would not be.
So if I understand your explanation, and I'm not a noise engineer, so I have no understanding of technicals of this. You're, what it seems to be that you're telling me is that if the background noise, or outstanding, is more than the noise being created that's coming in, I won't hear the noise that's being created. Is that?
Yes or no? If the background noise level is more than 10 dB above, then you won't hear it. If it's less than 10, you might hear it depending on the frequency of the sound, the pitch of the sound.
Okay, so we're not saying we won't hear anything. We shouldn't hear a lot?
All right, what I'm saying is, you shouldn't hear anything from the operation inside the building.
Inside the building, but that's not the only operation inside the building.
No, yes. And then I went through the list of other things. That you should not hear a front-end loader or a forklift operating outside the building at 160 feet. Again, I'm using that, you know, that distance. Same thing with trucks that are idling. I use three trucks. Joe seems to point out that this is fairly unlikely that this will happen at one time, but I'm still using that as a worst-case scenario, if you will. And in all of these cases, I come up with the same answer that it's going to be below the background noise level.
Okay, so it's kind of having 10 dB differential for the?
To be inaudible, yes.
But if it's close?
If it's close, it'll be audible, yes. That's why I was trying to use this chart of saying quiet, very quiet, whatever.
While we were talking, people were whispering over in the corners.
Yes.
That occurred very clearly. I couldn't make out what they said. But that had to be more than 10 dB differential?
Absolutely not, no.
Okay, so the 10 dB differential is not?
10 dB differential, just to use an expression, is like a shout to a whisper type of difference. That's an extremely large amount of noise reduction.
Okay, I, I guess I'm confused on this, but, so I'm a little labor of that, but when you talk about those backups being a raised voice level, the backup noises?
Yes.
Yes, that's what I thought, sorry. I, for my personal experience, I've been behind this vehicles and I've been across the parking lot for a minute. A whole lot more than what I call raised voice.
Well, what I'm comparing it to is published data that says a 61 or 62 dB level is what a survey taken of 2,000 or 3,000 people said, what does that sound like? And it was like, well, it sounds, you know, like a raised voice. So I'm just quoting that.
Okay, you're just quoting.
Oh, yeah, I said I was quoting from published information, yeah.
One other question, and I think somebody else is going to answer this question before I can ask you your question. We've talked about roll-offs.
Yes.
And so, roll-offs will be in the scenario of traffic that's coming in and out of this facility. So I'm just curious, I know the roll-off is not as swamped, you know, traffic, it's not a 50-foot trailer that is coming in. But what's the possibility of that? And can you get that whole thing into the building and roll it off with the doors closed?
That's my, that's my. My understanding is the entire thing could sit inside the building. This is my understanding. And my understanding also is when I measured this thing, is this is the exact vehicle that will be used for the operation. That's the reason I wanted to take it that way, yeah.
So, what's the greatest, the last bag, that's the deepest, deepest bag, is well over 50 feet.
70 feet.
70 feet, so it should be, but fine. All right, thank you, Senator.
Before you go.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't hear you talk about trucks when they're accelerating, certainly they're going to be accelerating before going up the grade into the dump area.
I didn't speak about it because it fell into the category of moving on-site. When they're accelerating, the difference would only be 1 to 2 dB.
I find it difficult to believe that it's, that just ordinary movement as compared to going up a hill is no different.
No, I'm saying it's going to be 2 dB higher.
2 dB, just if they're, if they're moving, even if they're moving downhill or uphill, doesn't make any difference?
I would assume, I would assume uphill would be louder than downhill.
That's what I would assume, too.
I'm not trying to address this, but I'm trying to understand this difference. My dentist's office is next door to A W B, so I frequent that parking lot, probably not as often as I should. But I clearly hear, you know, stuff being compacted, trucks, you know, hauling around. That's like a 12 or 15-acre place over there, a lot larger. I think further away, I'd be standing down the facilities, the transfer building, back and back. But I clearly hear that. And how would that be differential on?
Well, my understanding is.
There's a lot of noise on White Street, the ambient noise level has to be as much as, or even dry. Even dry is kind of isolated.
My understanding is that the operation will be inside a building with the doors closed.
But you still have the trucks moving in and out of the facility and the backup leaps and everything is going on outside.
Yes.
I think, excuse me, I got to break in, I just have to have one more question. And that is, you're given these figures for the operation of the tractors and everything as they, where they're operating inside, right?
Inside the building.
Right.
And also, I also gave one for the forklift or for outside the building, yes.
But now, it does seem to me that these doors are going to be opened a lot. They're not going to be, they're not going to stop working when the doors are open, are they?
I gave, I gave the comparison of doors closed, one door open, all doors open in my little talk here just now. So I gave the addition, the increases in noise for one door open or all the doors open, and also all the doors closed.
All the doors open for the, all three machines you're going to work, working inside?
Well, I make the assumption that there's, say, three trucks inside, all the doors are open, which is not supposed to be the case, but I open the doors anyway to say, what would happen? How much leakage would it be out? And then, how much would it be at the closest property line? This is what I was trying to convey here.
What do you figure is the noise producer at that time?
With the doors open? Noise producer will be whatever's happening in the back of the truck with the roll-off and with the, with the front-end loader working.
Well, how about the compacted, the excavator?
Same thing. I added 5 dB for that.
So with an excavator and a front-end loader and the trucks dumping their material, is this is the figure you come up with?
No, no, no. It's 80 dB inside the building with all these things operating. If you take the attenuation of the building itself with all the doors closed, it's like put a barrier around this noise source. It reduces the noise by 30 dB 10 feet from the surface of the building outdoors.
How about outside the open door?
Outside the open door would be 4 dB higher than if the door were closed. For each door, not just for all of them.
Wait a second, if it's 80, if it's 80 dB inside, doors are open.
Okay.
How can it be any attenuation if you're right out in front of the door?
You've got a truck that's blocking a good part of what's escaping through the door. There's a, truck acts as a partial barrier. You also have the volume of the building that is absorption for the sound. And there will be some leakage outside, of course. And the calculation for that, and it's a calculation, was 4 dB for each door. That's open.
Written report for your leak investigation?
Oh, I certainly can, sure. Yeah. Is that okay? Yeah.
We'll check that.
I have, I have the copies, yes.
Okay, any other questions, Commissioner? Should we move right ahead? Let's move right on, we have a lot of people who have a right to, if you heard from my.
All right, at this point, I'd like to ask Tad Murray, our sound expert, Tad Wallenhaupt.
Oder.
Oder, I'm sorry, expert, Tad Wallenhaupt, to talk about some of the revisions to the design and.
Good evening. Where to start? Tad Wallenhaupt, Air One Inc., Air Quality Control Systems. I am the president and owner of Air One. At the request of MSW Associates and our last meeting, we revised what we were originally discussing and come up with some new plans and ideas.
Could you just excuse me one second?
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Chairman, Turney Cava just handed to me a report from Air One dated January 28, '08, that we will mark as Exhibit S. Thank you.
I have another exhibit for you also, which is the work he's going to refer to. And I have as many full-size ones as you would like, tell me how many you'd like.
I don't know at this point, Brett.
And there are 11 by 17 copies attached to the backs of all these reports, they're the same print.
I'll keep on looking at those.
Exhibit, I'm sorry. Exhibit T, what's the title of that? What's the title, please?
Oh, Title of the Plan? It's Air Handling System Layout, is the drawing title? Okay. When we last met, we had discussed many items, and there were some issues with doors being opened and odors escaping from the building. There's also some reference to virus and bacteria that could possibly be associated with the waste stream, and also the actual layout of the system and how it would work. So we went back and looked at alternatives and came up with a new plan for dealing with the odors, bacteria and virus, as discussed, because potentially it could be found within the waste stream. And we have looked at using air curtains and the same filtration system that we originally discussed and using this in a section of the facility that would be isolated from the rest. And one of the things that should be noted is that this system is the best available control technology. It's also considered the best management practice and an engineering control due to the components proposed and the treatment capability. It should be noted that standard in the industry for facilities similar in size to this one and handling more volume than the one that is proposed, standard would be to use an odor-modifying agent applied in an atomized mist to the odorous source. Similar facilities may also use air curtains and incorporate an odor-modifying agent to that. Large-scale facilities could use an air handling system attached to a scrubbing device or filtration system that would oxidize some of the compounds within the airstream. So what we're proposing, and it should be noted that I'm not familiar with any solid waste handling facility currently in operation that uses an odor management system that provides particulate odor and bacteria virus capture and treatment to prevent the elements from migrating off the site. And that's specific to a solid waste handling facility. So, that I'm not familiar with any facility that handles solid waste that uses an odor management system that provides for particulate odor and bacteria virus capture and treatment. Oh, to prevent these elements from migrating off the site. So the proposal is this. There are three distinct levels of protection. Number one is air curtain barrier at the entry doors. This will prevent odors from migrating out of the MSW handling area. Item two is an air filtration system, as we discussed at the last hearing. And item three is onsite storage of odor-modifying agents to be applied to vehicles entering and exiting the facility that may exhibit nuisance odors outside of the building, outside of the capabilities of the air handling system we're discussing. So first off, the first thing would be the air curtains, which will be located at the two northern doors. What they do is they direct a stream of air, an invisible wall, if you will, across the opening. They'll be pulling the air off of the floor through a series of fans and redirect it inward. That air will in turn be sucked up by the air filtration systems. The air filtration systems will include an auto-strolling filter that is automatically advanced through time pressure readings and relay devices. Second phase of particulate treatment is a pre-filter that will capture particulate matter as small as four microns in size. This filter media is capable of removing total and respirable dust from the airstream, which are concerns with OSHA and EPA. Following this media, there'll be a bank of UV lamps of the C variety. It improves indoor air quality and eliminates mold, bacteria, and other contaminants. UVC is recommended as a supplement by the United States Center for Disease Control for the treatment or irradiation of certain bacteria and virus. UVC lamp systems are designed to kill or inactivate surface and airborne microorganisms that trigger allergy, asthma symptoms, including mold and mold spores, solvents, and other VOCs. It also eliminates associated odors. It prevents the spread of infectious diseases caused by bacteria, including TB, Legionella, E. coli, and whooping cough, and virus, including colds, flu, measles, German measles, chickenpox, smallpox, and SARS. It does not produce any ozone or secondary contaminants. It will not harm building occupants, equipment, or furnishings. The final phase of this system is the carbon filters. We discussed those last week, or last meeting. And it needs to be said that there are certain compounds that are assimilated into MSW in the breakdown of, that create the odors. There's a list of them here, I won't go through each one independently. But in a nutshell, the carbon media that we're proposing to use in this filtration system will be impregnated with potassium permanganate. Potassium permanganate oxidizes some of these compounds that the carbon will not absorb. So you have two things going on inside your carbon. Lastly, the odor-modifying agents, they'll be stored on-site. They can be applied mechanically through street sweeping apparatus and/or manually applied. The use of these agents is commonplace in the industry and may be considered a best management practice and standard operating procedure when managing odors at a facility. And you can see that that is a standard in the industry at similar facilities and larger facilities. So in summary, the Air Quality Control System will kill or inactivate bacteria and virus. There is redundancy with this system because there are two UV lamps per housing. There'll be a total of 20. There'll be a total of 20 UV lamps onsite. One lamp is enough to treat for each filter housing. We have two in there. If one should short out or should collect dust, you can replace them. The only air to exit the MSW handling area will leave after being treated for particulate matter, odors, and virus and bacteria. And this air will be directed through the eastern wall of the building away from neighbors. The air curtain system that we're proposing will allow for one or both doors to be open simultaneously while preventing odors from migrating outside the MSW handling area. And the use of the odor-modifying agents on an as-needed basis in response to nuisance odors due to vehicles entering and exiting the facility will add an extra level of protection for the management of the odors. That's pretty much what I've given you guys in a nutshell.
Right. Questions from the commission? I have a question. Have you ever installed a system like this?
I have installed air filtration systems, the air curtain systems. I spoke with the manufacturer, and they are installed at similar facilities, and I have seen them in operation.
Have you seen one that did all of the things that you said this was going to do?
No, this is a state-of-the-art system. This is a first-time run.
Okay. So we don't have, we don't know by experience how it works, except it's how it's supposed to work.
Yes. We know how it's supposed to work and how it's been designed and engineered.
Can I ask a quick question, Ted? You may not know how all of these elements combined work because no transfer station that you know of anywhere in the country has ever gone to this extent, installed all these systems. But do we know how the individual component systems work?
Yes, we do.
For example, the UV system, where's that used that we know where it works?
UV systems such as this one are actually used in hospitals for sterile rooms. They're used to ensure that other patients may not be infected or impacted by tuberculosis, which is one of the most dangerous airborne contaminants. That's where UV is used commonly.
So all of these components are used in various types of facilities, and we know how they all work?
Yes.
Right. Now, you've mentioned hospitals. Do you know any of this? This has been used in a garbage situation, too?
No, I'm not familiar with anybody using it in that capacity.
Any other questions? Mr. Urice.
In the filtration system that takes a particulate, that's going to be 100% solid?
Yes.
There's not going to be anything that gets through outside?
It goes through two filters. Goes through two filters, yeah.
Nothing's going through that, so...
I'm sorry, what?
Nothing's going through.
Smaller than four microns in size. The filters were clogged.
The carbon filter system that was originally proposed, that all the components of the permanganate impregnant and carbon, is that new, that's a new addition?
No, that's part of the original proposal.
Original, okay.
Yep. That didn't change.
You don't have to really change much more than, once they're empty on months or something like that.
Yeah. Right now, we have based this system on a changeout every one to two months for carbon.
So just to summarize, the contention is in the application, if I am living on Eden Drive...
Yes.
And I was up there yesterday. I don't see anything, I don't smell anything, there will be no bacterial contamination whatsoever coming off of this facility that I live in that work area.
I can attest to what would be inside that building, and I'm confident that what's inside that building, the system will treat it. What drives by on Newtown Road or another road that may walk up there, I have no control over.
I'm asking, coming from that facility, is it your contention that you're not being eliminated from that facility, or are you going to send a treatment that points inside the building? I'm asking, what will eliminate from that facility? To your expectations, I'll eliminate...
I don't think I can speculate on that.
People cannot hear your comments.
Oh, sorry.
Eliminate the noise question, but if you live on Eden Drive, you don't smell anything, and there's no risk of human contamination, bacterial, viral, chemical, coming from this facility, the whole facility. I'm not talking about inside.
I can't speak to anything but what I'm proposing. I'm giving you the best solution I can give you inside the building.
I'm assuming you can't answer the question?
No. I'm sorry, I don't have the capability to see into the future.
Excuse me, can you whisper a little bit quietly?
Yeah, please, it's very, please be quiet because we're taping this. In order to make a good record, we have to back on. The background noise has to be low, basically.
Excuse me, I want to change the tape.
Sure.
If that was an under question, you can rephrase the question back to me and then answer it.
I guess I'm still failing to understand what exactly it is you're trying to ask me.
I'm asking, if I live on Eden Drive, do I have any risk off of this facility from the cause of this proposal?
What risk?
I'm getting ready to say...
Okay.
Smelling it?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm asking about hearing it? Are being contaminated anyway from biological, viral, or bacterial, viral, or chemical invasion to me or my kids or whatever? Is the filtration system that good?
The filtration system is designed for inside the building, and yes, it's designed to treat all of these things that we've discussed.
And not with escape?
It wouldn't be likely. I mean, you could have a truck outside the building that I have no control over. So that's what I, I mean, you're asking me a question that's outside of the realm of my control.
I understand.
So I'm isolating this.
What you're testifying says has to do with operation within the building, but you're not making any representation for any operations outside of the building? Is that...
No.
That's not fair question.
No, I mean, that's the answer to the question. No, I'm not making any representation outside of the building.
Okay, thanks.
Mr....
As a point of clarification on that, what metrics or do you gather to validate the fact that this, you know, this equipment is working at 100%? I mean, I think I'm hearing that it's pretty close to 100% effective. How do you determine that? What is the history of the measurements that you take, and how effective are these separate systems?
The answer to that, if I hear you, if I understand this correctly, the safeguards in place perhaps is what we're talking about with the rule in the filter media. There are pressure gauges and relay devices that automatically advance and send signal lights to humans to say, okay, there's a problem here. We have a filter that's clogging up. It needs to be replaced or changed. With the carbon, as I discussed at the last hearing, where they're used currently, the manufacturer says they have a 24 to 48-month lifespan. I've cut that down to a one- to two-month lifespan to start. We'll be able to gauge that as we go further along. The UV systems, they're based on airflow that passes by. One lamp is enough to treat 4,000 cubic feet per minute passing by it. We have two lamps in place, so ideally they could do 8,000. So we also have two carbon filters in the system to treat the odors. So the first one is capable of dealing with it, but we now have another one. So we have redundancies along the way to try to curb any of the theoretical what-ifs.
Okay, so let me rephrase the question. Are there standards for clean air when it comes to, you know, particulates, for example? And are there measurements taken on a routine basis? Is that part of the best agreed system that you're planning to put in that would actually measure to get to those goals on a regular basis? Is there a testing plan?
There is not a testing plan, and there are particulate matter standards that are set forth by, I'm not so certain, Danbury, but I know they're set forth by OSHA and EPA.
Have you ever seen any of these, this equipment put in place and measurements taken on a regular basis to ensure that they're working properly?
There is independent testing data on this equipment from other applications that discuss different emissions that have passed through it, particulate matter, that I have reviewed, and I have seen these systems in operation at other facilities.
As part of your installation, would you recommend taking independent measurements on a regular basis as part of the program for maintaining this equipment?
I don't think taking measurements would be in order. I believe that, you know, thorough operations and maintenance of these systems is what is required, and they should be checking them daily, and then inspecting things weekly, and then changing out on an as-needed basis. You can tell a lot from what you see, smell, sniff, taste.
Do you know if there's any regulations that are, because I don't, any regulations associated with, you know, testing for clean air for a plant like this?
Yeah, I can address those. There are state regulations. The Department of Environmental Protection has state regulations that relate to testing. They basically, it doesn't say that you have, you don't smell nothing. That's not the standard. The state standard is not, you will never smell anything. As you were saying, will you ever smell anything on Eden Drive? That's not the state standard. The state standard is, is there, they look at a reasonableness, basically a reasonableness concept of saying, are the levels below certain standards that would, you know, you might occasionally have something, but those are the state monitoring standards. And if there are problems with the facility, if it doesn't operate correctly, people have the recourse to contact the Department of Environmental Protection. They will send inspectors out, and they will ascertain whether this is a problem. Bear in mind, though, that you, you know, you might say you're smelling something, but it may not be coming from this facility. And so that's what they would have to determine. And they would go in and look to see how the facility was operating and whether it was operating under its plan and under the maintenance and other requirements that were involved, and they would make a determination, and they have the ability to get people to stop operating in a bad manner if that happens. But that's basically the state regulatory regime on this. The problem is that it's hard to measure odors. It's not the same as sound. It's not the same as some other quantifiable things because you have different human responses to them.
I'm not talking just about odors, but maybe particulates and, you know, bacteria.
They do have ability to measure those things. Particulates, I'm not sure about bacteria. But again, here, again, we have a system that's installed that, what we're going to do is install a system that is going to, that has been proven effective in the hospital setting and in other settings to kill bacteria and other airborne contamin, undershirt contaminants like viruses. It's the best practice that you can implement. It will be effective. It has been effective. It has shown effectiveness before, and we have no reason to believe it won't be effective in this circumstance, to contain whatever is in that building. And the idea is to keep it in the building so it doesn't escape the building because, I think, Ted, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't you say you feel comfortable that none of these odors are going to escape this building?
With all systems working, yeah, I feel comfortable.
With the systems operating, even with the doors open. And we've now segregated it, so there's only two doors to MSW because there are going to be curtains for the rest of the facility. And odors are not going to come off the construction debris. Okay? That's drywall and other things like that. It's not where the odors are going to come from, the MSW. That's now been segregated. So when those doors are fully open, nothing's going to escape that building because of the air that's blowing it inside into the filtration system. And that's, you can't do better than that because they're not going to escape the building. There's not more, anything more you can do. I mean, less people want to have more pleasant smelling trash that comes in.
Go ahead.
So are there standards with respect to any of these systems, you know, that you would build to based on, you know, other applications, I mean, similar applications? Are there standards that you're building to to ensure that the...
The standard in the industry, we're going above and beyond it, as I've explained earlier, that the standard in the industry, there is no standard, per se, by a building department or an odor agency or anything like that. There is standard in the industry with respect to solid waste handling, and how do you deal with odors? How do you deal with dust?
So this is a one person kind, basically?
Yes, with all these components put together, it most certainly is.
And, you know, I guess I just am concerned that if you're putting this in place and you're just saying, as long as the filters don't clog, everything works, is, I don't think that's sufficient in my mind. I mean, I think some testing would be done on a regular basis because this is pioneering ground, so that's just my concern. I did have a few other questions.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Nance.
You have...
Testing, we can most certainly put together a testing protocol and test for particulate matter, PM10 and PM 2.5, which is the standard in the industry for dust. A protocol could be put together, and we could do some testing, certainly.
Thank you. You have two doors you're using these air filter, the curtains on, but you have, you have four doors. What are the other doors?
The other, the... The MSW handling section of the facility will be sectioned off with a curtain. And so it'll be isolated from the rest of the building.
It's not an air curtain, it's a regular...
Yeah, the air will be, yes.
Like a shower curtain.
Yeah, like an industrial shower curtain.
All right, good. Another question. I guess I'll yield.
Okay, fine. Any other questions? If not...
One question, just clarification on something that occurs. In the air handling system, it's ducted throughout the building for the intake?
No.
It's not just on the end of the building or something like that?
No, the intakes are at the front for the units depicted here, and then there's two units at the back, and it's ducted out through the eastern wall. Okay, the rest of them are constantly pulling. You can see the three nodes depicting what the air is doing. It's blowing across the door, opening inward, and they collect it up into the system and it's constantly moving through this whole building and being treated.
You don't reason why I ask this question. You're talking about the shower curtain, the industrial shower curtain that separates the MSW. Will that impede the airflow off the other areas?
No, we don't want airflow from the other areas.
Oh, so you're not filtering?
No.
Think about the last two veins?
The MSW system, that's correct. The MSW handling area.
Okay. I didn't know, I remember. On the last, the third objective that you're hoping to address here is onsite storage of odor-modifying agents to be applied to vehicles entering and/or exiting the facility that exhibit nuisance odors outside the building.
Yes.
What exactly is that?
It'd be a masking agent, a neutralizer, or...
Is it liquid?
It could be liquid, it could be solid, it could be mulch, as we discussed, bark mulch. We could use anything in that realm.
Thank you.
All right. I think we're going to take five minutes recess.
I think I can just press the... Yeah. And she's going to go to town. She has no headcount. She has, yeah, it's been that long. More questions, remember?
Thank you. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Before I move on to the next person, I just want to say one thing about the presentation you just heard on odors. One of the, and I'm going to have Mr. Brown come up later and talk about this, not immediately. But, you know, one of the problems we've got here is we're a little bit chasing our tail here. I mean, there's a reason why no other facility has these kind of things in place. And the reason is because these are not problems in these facilities. OSHA, EPA, all of these agencies are involved in what goes on the tipping floor of a transfer station, and there is not a bacteria problem. And there is not a, I mean, all of the studies that have been cited by everybody who threw piles of these studies up here, not one was conclusive on these issues of bacteriological things. There are no epidemiological studies. In fact, the materials presented on January 2nd about the Washington DC situation says right in them that there are no epidemiological studies that substantiating in this stuff. So what we're doing is we're a little bit chasing our tail. But what we're trying to put together here is the uber-application with every conceivable measure we can take to allay the fears of people, which are no more than fears and completely unsubstantiated. But having said that, I want to move on to a couple of more presentations. Right now, I want to have a brief presentation by Don Klepper-Smith, who is, one of the questions that was raised by people last time was, why are you doing this? And you really don't need to do this, and there's no demand for it, and why, what's going on with White Street and what have you? And Mr. Klepper-Smith is going to present a very brief presentation on some of the feasibility issues that have put us here, and he'll answer some of the other questions that have come up.
Good evening, for the record, Mr. Chairman. My name is Don Klepper-Smith. I am a chief economist and director of research for Data Corp Partners based in New Haven. I want to thank members of the commission, I want to thank the public for the opportunity to be here tonight. My firm was retained to do a fiscal impact analysis on the proposed development, and we have prepared a full report as well as a five-page summary. Now, I know everybody has an interest in keeping things short, so I will keep my remarks brief and to the point. By way of introduction, just to tell you a little bit about my professional background, I've been doing fiscal impact studies now for over 20 years, market studies for over 20 years. We've conducted dozens and dozens of similar sorts of analyses. I chair Governor Rell's Council of Economic Advisers, which met earlier today. I was SNET's corporate economist for 18 years. I recently stepped down as president of the Hartford Area Business Economists. I am a part-time economics commentator for WTNH in New Haven, and I do a regular section for the New Haven Register. The report that I have prepared that is being issued to you is a self-contained document, which means that all the data inputs, calculations, assumptions, spreadsheets are included and properly sourced. In the interest of time, I have three topics, and I normally would go over a PowerPoint, but given the logistics of this room, I'm going to keep my remarks, again, brief and to the point and hit on three key topics. Specifically, net fiscal impacts, I want to talk a little bit about the methodology and results. I want to talk, as Greg alluded to, market demand.
Yeah, I think you have...
You've got to take the baby out of here.
I'm sure you'll have to take her out, please.
While that's happening, I'd just like to give you his report for the record.
So again, the three topics I'm going to be covering, I'm going to talk first about fiscal impacts, the methodology, and our primary results. Number two, market demand, and number three, summarize with some key conclusions. In terms of methodology, the methodology that was employed was the proportional valuation method, which is an average costing approach used to project the impact of non-residential, i.e. commercial and industrial development on local costs and revenues. This is basically the assessment of the new practitioner's guide to fiscal impact analysis, which is basically the guide that fiscal practitioners like myself use. You should know that a fiscal impact analysis looks at only direct revenues and direct expenses. Other indirect impacts, such as consumption of local goods and services from future employees, or property taxes paid from future employees, are not considered. Our estimates have tendency to be conservative and may actually understate the net fiscal benefits to the city of Danbury. I want to stress at the outset here, we adhere strictly to the practices and protocols laid out by the Fiscal Practitioners Handbook. In terms of net revenues at full buildout in fiscal year 2009, and given documented assumptions, the city would reap a net fiscal benefit at full buildout of $8,200 from the proposed transfer station after all possible municipal expenses are accounted for, including the opportunity cost of taxes now collected on the property. Our research also shows that there is potential market demand for a second transfer station in Danbury. Research shows that the region generates 1.5 tons of rubbish per capita annually. As of 2030, Danbury's population is expected to rise by 6,300 people above current levels, climbing to 85,753. This implies that the Danbury region will be required to deal with 9,400 more tons of rubbish than it does today. Moreover, the proposed facility may be more convenient for someone compared to the 307 White Street facility across town, and may serve to potentially reduce driving times and possibly relieve road congestion elsewhere in Danbury. In the long run, our assessment is that competition in waste management services also means lower prices for consumers in the long run. Data Corp advocates letting competitive market forces prevail with winners and losers being determined by pricing for sanitation, waste management services, customer service, access, convenience, and drive times. Our conclusion, if you look at our study, 50 pages long, is that the proposed transfer station makes sense from an economic and fiscal standpoint. Thank you very much, and I'd like to entertain any questions.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, we received the report, Mark's limit you.
Okay, exhibit you. I don't have any questions, I definitely owe this to us because this is not very useful for us, whether it's physically good or not.
Well, what we're saying is that, given the garbage situation and given population trends, and I can tell you, I spend a lot of time with corporate clients in Connecticut looking at population trends. And the one thing I can tell you is that these demographic shifts have implications for social services, health services, and more people. And more people, very simply in English, without getting too technical or too economically in-depth, more people means more garbage. And the question here is, we have one facility in town. And our assessment here is that in the long run, this has to be looked at and be given serious consideration.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask David Brown to come up, and he has a couple of items to present.
Do you have a copy, sir?
Yes, I do. Good evening, for the record, my name is David Brown, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with approximately 30 years of experience in solid waste facility, permitting, development, and operation. The first item that I'd like to cover is a very small housekeeping item. The last hearing night that I was here, one of the commission members asked for a definition of what is clean wood in the context of the regulations and in the context of this application. And I have...
Mr. Chairman, for the record, exhibit B.
The exhibit that's being passed around, what I've provided to you are two separate definitions. These are straight from the Connecticut DEP's regulations. And there are two definitions that would apply to this application. One is called clean wood, and it, as indicated in the definition, it refers to products such as pallets, skids, spools, packaging materials, et cetera. That's straight from the regulation. And then the second regulatory reference is one that is a bit counterintuitive. It's called land clearing debris, and I think most people hearing that term would think about things other than wood, but according to DEP's regulation, it is just the wood component of land clearing activities. So these are the items which, under this application and under the future DEP permit, would be allowed to be placed in an outside area uncovered, which was the state of the application when I last did before you. If you have questions about that, I'll address those.
Are there any questions?
The other item I'm going to touch on quickly, it's come up a couple of times tonight, and it was one of the items which was raised by the traffic engineer, which is the source and destination of waste. And the response is that the facility would receive waste and recyclable deliveries in local collection trucks, as has been our testimony. And as a result, those trucks are going to come from nearby areas. We're talking about local vehicles. Our estimate has been 10 to 15 miles distant from the facility as a typical delivery range. The, consequently, when we look at where would the source likely be, it's going to be the region's population centers. Danbury, Brookfield, Bethel, New Milford, Ridgefield, Newtown, those would be the primary sources because that is, that's where the primary population centers, where the primary economic activity takes place. In terms of outgoing materials, the, because of the state, status of the project, of course, the applicant has not yet entered into contracts for disposition of material. But the material's going to leave the facility, it's going to go up, it's going to get on Route 84, and it's going to go in one of two directions. It's going to go westbound, potentially into distant long-haul landfill sites in Ohio, western Pennsylvania, those are the typical destinations. Upstate New York, west of Syracuse is another typical destination for transfer trailers leaving Connecticut. So we have some western destinations which I can talk about more specifically, but those are very common.